All right, it's six o'clock. We're going to call the order, our meeting of the Granite Falls School Board for November 3rd, 2021. If I call please stand, join with the place of allegiance. The pleasure we did to comply of the 93 days of that. And you certainly have a role to play. One, two, under that, we have the call for the repeat second is drawn. Thank you. Tonight with us, we have Director Green, Director Penagus, Director Beach, myself, as well as Dr. Middleton, our superintendent. I make a motion to excuse Director Carey, who is traveling at the moment. The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And me opposed, thank you. All right, moving on, first to recognition and communication, item 2A, Principal Appreciation Month. I have here proclamation for the state of Washington. Whereas the Washington State, oh, sorry, whereas the Washington Senate has declared the month of October 2021 as National Principal Month in accordance, in coordinating, sorry, this is kind of blurry. In coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with the US Congress, it does make National Principal Month. A resolution thereof, and whereas principals and assistant principals play significant roles in our education system by creating hope for each and every student in their building, by leading culture, systems, and learning, and by working tirelessly each day as visionaries, assessment experts, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates initiatives. And whereas principals and assistant principals work collaboratively with families, teachers, and district officials to develop mission statements, set performance goals, and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence and maintain high curriculum standards and expectations for all students. And whereas the Association of Washington School Principals honors such exemplary principals and assistant principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as their exemplary contribution to the profession. And whereas to honor and recognize the contributions of all school principals and assistant principals to the success of each and every student in Washington schools, our most valuable resource, and to encourage residents of Washington to observe Principal's Month with the appropriate ceremonies and activities to promote awareness of the importance of school leadership and ensuring that every child has access to high-quality education. Now therefore, I, Danzley, Governor of the state of Washington, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Principal's Month in Washington, and encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed this 27th day of September 2021, Danzley, Governor. So, turn over Dr. Middleton's.
Welcome, everybody, welcome to our success end. This is National Appreciation Month for our principals, which just ended in October. But seeing that we're meeting today, it's not even just a good time to combine two events. We can wait until this about being a honor of principals and remember to introduce our local principals at this time. First from Mount Way, this is well, this is Thursday, so I'm enjoying the day next. From Montecristo Elementary, this is Wayne, this is Ryan. Now, I need to, I should share with you that this is well, and this right are on Zoom right now, because we've got a seat there. They want to zoom in and watch our ceremony, watch our students and staff. From Granite Falls Middle School, this is B B. From Granite Falls High School, this is Nigel. This is Eric. And from Russell High School, this is Ben. All of our principals were successful teachers in the classroom before becoming school leaders. The joint school administration, after being made such difference in the classroom that they realized they may get hacked on the school as school leaders. Their days are long, often dealing with late night or early morning issues regarding weather, substitutes, buildings, with either phone calls or emails or texts. And that's just for me, for my alone, from the community. It goes to this, once they arrive in their buildings, then they're on. They're on for the rest of the day. And really, they don't get ready until the last stop leaves and the staff and parts. And often times, that's the only quiet kind of day they have. And during that time, they're calling a couple of emails or making phone calls to you. The day doesn't end many nights because, or at that point, because a lot of times there are school events or business events at this time. So their days are truly, truly very long. If you have any relatives that are current administrators, building administrators, you are likely greeted with a smile and a lot of respect. Our principals are leaders, model followers, but they are people first who have created lots of relationships with students, families, staff. I appreciate our principals every day, especially this strong group of administrators that we have this year. But tonight, I just want to express on behalf of the school board that our community, to you, are leader, standing. But please, for round of applause for our principals.
So it's, moving on. All right, that'll work. So it's my pleasure to do the next part of our announcement this evening. Does anybody know, election was held yesterday. Your votes have not been certified. But we do know for a fact we are going to get two new board members on the score because we have four numbers who are retired, in essence. And I would like to invite to honor each of them. First one to honor, Director Green, might come up here real quick. Now, Dave Green and I have known each other for many, many years. Quick fun anecdote, first time I met Dave Green officially, I was in my front yard doing some work. He drove up and he was hot. You remember that? That was when we officially met, yeah. Yeah, he was pretty angry because he was passionate about some thought on the school. And a couple of years later, when we were looking at maybe a new board member, I realized, I think Dave's the guy, is he that passionate? So I reached out to Dave, turned to him around, and if he did, sort of a wonderful term. I want to say thank you, Dave, from our community, from our school district, from the school board, for the excellent work that Dave has done. You guys are done. So my very best. It's been a part of Granite Falls, we have been here for many, many years. We're going to work with the middle school and then later on, and then on the school board. My funny, I go to Dr. Penagus, is, well, I have a nickname that I call you, you know what it is? I call him Dr. Woodstock. Dr. Penagus was the Woodstock. Best part of that story, he told the story, and I was always impressed, was his friends from college, Richard Varon, came to say, hey, we're going to the music festival, let's go. So he's like, okay. We didn't know exactly what this Woodstock thing was, so we wanted to make sure he was all prepared for a product laser, and at first time, just in case. I remember Dr. Penagus, the only person with Woodstock, quite a short time laser. But he's been an incredible part of our community, incredible member of the school board, and I want to thank you for all your work you've done for us and for the, the community as well. Yes, it does. All right, it's time to honor, we're going to start with our students. It's been certainly a tough, tough 20 months. But what's so encouraging is that despite that, despite a worldwide, worldwide epidemic, we have students and staff who are still thriving, and we must recognize that. And as proud as we are of you for what you're doing, we're also so proud of you because you've become role models to your fellow students, fellow staff members. So I'm going to have our principals come up, I'm going to start with Ms. Thursday and Mountain Way Elementary.
So Isla, Isla is from Jessica Severson's classroom. Mountain Way is so lucky to have Isla in kindergarten. Isla is helpful, kind, and positive, and everyone who meets her would agree. She is an independent person who loves to try her best at everything she does. She comes to school with a smile on her face and ready to learn every single day. Outside of school, Isla loves horses and being with her family. She has many passions already, and I know she's going to do such amazing, such amazing things throughout the school and onward. We're excited to have the chance to nominate her as such a wonderful student who is going to change the world. Give Isla a hug. Isla, come back. Yeah, our next student is the daughter of Nicoletta and Jeffrey Hayes, Liliana Hayes. Liliana is in Lindsay Grabner's classroom. Lily has been a rock star in first grade this year. She has helped create a friendly and positive environment in our classroom. Lily is a self-starter who loves to learn and read. In her free time, she likes to practice cheers at recess with her friends. Lily always makes sure everyone is included by inviting friends to play or playing with someone who is feeling sad. Lily comes to school with a smile on her face every day, and I'm so happy to nominate her for the success in education. Mountain Way Granite Falls School District is so lucky to have her. Can't wait to see the changes that she makes in the world with her kind spirit. Okay, and my final one is the son of Amanda and ten Eddie. George Eddie. George is in Sarah Garlock's classroom. George is a very kind, thoughtful, and motivated student. He is a very good role model for his peers. George is always willing to help out other students when he has finished an assignment early. George enjoys engaging with his classmates and does so in a positive manner. George is a very social student who gets along with everyone. George knows the difference between right and wrong and is very honest. He always has a smile and is in, and is friendly in the classroom.
From Montecristo Elementary, this is. I think Mike can see that one.
Thank you for joining me today. We're so proud to be a minor. Our first student, third grader Ava Baggett, from Ms. Olson's class. I'm up here today. Okay. Ava likes to play on her switch. Ava's favorite books are the Percy Jackson book series. She likes to read the sentences out loud as well as having her big sister read them out loud. She also likes to spend time with her big sister. That's really good. Ava's favorite subject is writing. When Ava doesn't know the word, she will keep practicing how to spell them and learn the meaning of the word. Ava has really improved her math skills. Right now, she is learning multiplication and division. This is Ava's first year here at Montecristo Elementary. Ava likes how the teachers celebrate birthdays at school. Ava wants to work for the Navy. She wants to learn how to sail a boat. Her dad used to work for the Navy, but he was able to come home when she was a baby. Ava is a great all-round student. She knows her minor pride every day. Minor pride is being safe, kind, respectful, and responsible. Ava makes sure to be safe by always pushing in her chair and other students' chairs when they forget. She shows how kind she is when she volunteers to help a classmate figure out an answer or by helping a classmate look for a lost jacket or a water bottle. Ava is always respectful of others and herself. She waits to be called on and is patient when another student is trying to get help. She knows, she shows that she respects herself by keeping a growth mindset. Ava always has a positive outlook on her potential, potential. Lastly, Ava shows responsibility by turning in her assignments and keeping track of her AR goal. She also shows responsibility by apologizing if she does something wrong, even if it is an accident, and works hard to make it right. Ava is an outstanding example of what it means to have minor pride. Nicholas Casey, fourth grade, Ms. Collym. Hi Nicholas, congratulations. Come here. Thank you. Nicholas likes to watch TV or play on the computer with his friends. Nicholas plays outside and plays with his dog with his sister. That's also very good. He likes to ride his bike down to the park. Nicholas just started jujitsu and get to go a few days a week. His favorite book series is the Winds of Fire series. PE is Nicholas's favorite subject because you get to really be active and play super fun games. Nicholas has improved at math. It used to be pretty challenging for him, but now he can whip it out a problem just like that. Yes. Our favorite memory from this year are the rainy days because you get to mix classes under the covered area and make new friends. One thing Nicholas wants to be is a construction worker or someone who works on houses. Nicholas Casey has been an excellent role model for his classmates. He models our minors pride pledge every day by being responsible, respectful, safe, and kind. We see Nicholas being a minor pride strong every day with both adults and students. Nicholas will be the first to help another student in need tidy up our classroom and to model excellent behavior. Nicholas also has an incredible, happy, and positive attitude every single day. Yes. His smile brightens our classroom. In addition to being an excellent role model, Nicholas is an exceptional academic student in both math and English language arts. His assignments show depth in his critical thinking skills and are always finished on time. We are very honored to be here with Nicholas today, and his teacher is very honored to be his teacher for this school year. I know Nicholas will have a successful fourth grade year and will continue to set a positive example for not only his classmates, but also for all the students at Montecristo Elementary. Congratulations. Congratulations. Wait, which class? Oh. Okay, great. Congratulations. We have one more minor to honor, fifth grader Alexia Magnusson. Congratulations, Alexia. Alexia really likes to dance. She goes to the Granite Falls School of Dance and takes ballet two, ballet three, act zero two, and is on the competition team. Very impressive. Alexa also likes to write stories. What favorite subject is in school for Alexa? Math, for sure, because Alexia's brain just processes math differently, and it is really fun. Her favorite book series is the I Survived book series. Alexia have improved at being able to remember what she read. One of the highlight, highlights from this school year is being able to spend time with her friends and not be on Zoom all year. Alexia wants to be a dancer or a mathematical engineer. Alexia's teacher, Mr. Moen, says that is proud to nominate Alexia Magnusson for the Success in Education Award. Since school began, Alexia has demonstrated that she is dedicated, responsible, helpful, and friendly. She always strives to her best at her work, does a fantastic job in participating in class, and is a prolific writer. He has also found her to be super helpful and empathetic to her classmates. She is quick to jump to her feet and assist her peers on assignments, support others to clean up messes in the room, and helps the teacher with needed tasks. Thanks for your efforts, Alexia, and congratulations.
From the middle school, Mr. Beach.
We have three outstanding candidates tonight. I only see two of them. Allison, come on up here. And the way that I do this, their, their teachers write some wonderful things about them. And at the middle school, this is their first step into having multiple teachers. And so she has six teachers, and they all wrote one or two sentences about Allison. And then I was able to kind of look up what Allison's name means. And so this is for the parents and just see if it truly does mean or she is the personality that her name means. So first off, the teachers, she's a quiet student. She's not shy, she's a quiet leader. She's respectful to staff and students. She always goes above and beyond to meet expectations. She's eager to volunteer and help out with anything that needs to be done. She is a perfect example of responsibility. She was one of the unfortunate students that had to quarantine, but that didn't stop her from keeping up on her schoolwork. She immediately emailed all her teachers to let them know, and she would be checking Canvas daily. Currently, she's earning all As and Bs because of her efforts. She loves to write fantasy stories. Her positive attitude helps steer classes in the right direction. Allison is truly a success in education. Yesterday, just being new sixth grade, I didn't even know who Allison was. And so I walked in to her gym class, and she was sitting by a friend, and I didn't know who she was. And I, who knows Allison? She was like, oh my gosh. And her eyes just got big as saucers, like, oh no, I got to go to the principal's office. But that was the first time I got to chat with her. I tricked her a little bit because I asked her who her best friend was, because I usually go to their friends to kind of get the true story of who the kids are. But her friends just said wonderful things about her. So her name, wow, that, means noble, means exalted one, strong sense of independence, a desire to excel and lead, likes balance and harmony, but she also easily gets forward. Close? Yes. Let's give Allison a round of applause. I am smiling. I don't think our seventh grade student is here, Ursula Gallagher. I did not see her, but we'll recognize her anyways. She is always ready to help in class, completes all assignments with great effort and accuracy. One of the most organized students the seventh grade team has ever seen. She takes her education seriously. She has a fantastic attitude and is always kind. She is talented, she is a talented artist who can be found sketching in her spare time. She is a snappy dresser, always showing off her passion flair. She always pays attention in class and is a big help to her teachers. Her smile lights up a room. Congratulations to Ursula for receiving the first quarter success in ed. She definitely deserves it. Her name, a saint's name with great literacy background, often used in Shakespeare. It means little gentle bear. She's a born leader, she inspires confidence all around. She is a hard worker, she's strong, quiet, good at using her hands. Her dad is the CTE teacher at the high school. She's strong and dependable, and she tends to keep her herself. Let's give a round of applause. And our eighth grade student, Mr. Steve Berlin. As everyone knows, last year, we were in quarantine online all the time, but I kept hearing this name, Steve Berlin. Steve Berlin is doing this, and I'm like, who is Steve Berlin? And then I got to know him just a little bit last year and getting to know him more and more. And every single one of his teachers said great things about him. Even last year, when we were online, he made an impact on the school just by his attitude, his behavior, and so this is pretty awesome that he gets recognized this year for success in it. His teacher, always ready, oops, wrong one. He's always ready to help in class, too. Incredible young man that understands the importance of investing in his own education. Always on time, respectful, willing to help others, and always asks thought-provoking questions to dig deeper into his learning. There are very, very few students who work as hard as Steve, ever. He leads by example. He is dedicated, kind, intelligent, and a fantastic conversationalist. And he has great hair. Outside of his academic successes, Steve manages a full schedule of cross-country, hopefully has track as well, wrote for the school newsletter, and is an active in many school leadership activities. Congratulations, Steve. We are so proud of your efforts and all you have accomplished. And he has great hair. His name, the royal crown. He has a magnetic presence. He has a magnetic presence, a deep sense of emotion, persuasive, and is an energetic self-starter. Strong belief in relationships and teamwork, very creative, resilient. He's persistent with a project, creates something of real meaning. Close? Congratulations, Mr. Steve Berlin.
Actually, from high school. So first student here from the high school. First of all, I had the opportunity to sit down and meet with each one of these students. And you know, every year, and I've been doing this for 27 years, I always say, "How can this group of students that I had in a particular year, you know, be outdone by my next student going to school?" And I can tell you that every one of these students that I sat down with were amazing. I mean, I could have sat and talked with them for an entire day, just listening to what they've done, you know, for their community, what they've done for their school, what they've done for their families. So these are some outstanding students. So first is Sam Morrison. Is Sam here? All right, so we'll talk a little about Sam. So Sam, he's a very involved senior with a 3.98 GPA and ranks sixth in his class. Mr. Beck told stated, "Sam has played a huge part in the success we have had this year in football. He's one of the captains. He is led by example and has shown great leadership. He's also shown that same leadership and dedication in the classroom, and is a huge part of a positive culture here at the high school." Ms. Hamilton stated, "After having Sam as a sophomore and now as a senior in AP Lit, I can see tremendous growth in his respect for education and the pride he takes in his accomplishments in the classroom, as well as his extracurricular activities. His contributions to our class discussions are greatly appreciated, as well as his willingness to help whenever needed. It is a true privilege to have him as a student." Finally, Mr. Williams said, "Sam was one of my top students last year, which was a trying year for everybody. Even with the difficulties of district learning, Sam worked hard, maintained a great attitude, and got the most out of challenging class. This year, Sam is my TA. He's a pleasure to work with because he is happy, competent, professional, and a self-starter. Sam is taking some challenging classes in his senior year. These include AP Literature and AP Calculus. He plans on getting a degree in computer engineering and is interested in attending University of Washington. He has been very involved at Granite Falls High School. Sam has participated in football, basketball, and baseball all four years. Sam has attended school in Granite Falls K through 12. Outside of school, he enjoys working out, playing sports, and hanging out with friends. Additionally, Sam is a member of Link Crew and will be involved with the Food Drive. Teachers that have made a huge impact on him is Mr. Nehe, Mr. Beck told. His best memories of Granite Falls High School are sports memories. Making it to the playoffs this year in football for the first time since 1990 is one of his most memorable, Sam Morrison." The next student is Alexa Mary Quinn Garcia. If you're here with Alexa, can you just raise your hand, his family and friends? All right, so Alexa is a very involved 11th grader with a GPA of 3.808 and ranks 10th in her class. Ms. Newman stated, "Alexa is positive and kind. She's outgoing and helpful to her classmates. She's eager to learn and fun to be around." Alexa has a big brain and a big heart. Mr. Williams stated, "She is academically gifted, but more importantly, she works hard and helps her classmates to do well. Even in a class above her grade level, Alexa stands out as a leader." Finally, Mr. Christiansen stated, "Alexa works and works to learn, to acquire the skills we are learning in class. She takes her time to do things right and will work during her own time to finish things to her high standards. Alexa has taken some very challenging classes, including pre-calculus, AP Language, Spanish 3, and Intro to Chemistry. She's interested in attending a four-year university or community college and transition to a university to major in chemistry or business. Alexa has been very involved in school, including serving as treasurer of FBLA and assembly coordinator for the Food Drive. Outside of school, she loves to play the guitar, read, and spend time with family. Alexa is currently reading Invisible Life with Addie LaRue. I even listen to some of her favorite alternative music in my office, including the Artuk Monkeys and The Neighborhood. She has five brothers and one sister. And something people may not know about her is that she used to play the violin when she was younger, along with the ukulele. Alexa. Next, we have Christina Scott. Right, so Christina is an outstanding senior who is major in art at Granite Falls. She is currently a Running Start student at Everett Community College and taking English 101. She has a 3.66 GPA and ranks 19th in her class. Ms. Newman said Christina is positive and kind. She is a talented artist and a hard-working student. She leads by quiet example. Mr. Christiansen stated, "Christina goes above and beyond the expected with every project. She puts in extra work with every project, and it's the extra work and attention to detail that make her successful in everything that she does." Mr. Williams stated, "Christina is so efficient and organized. It doesn't matter what task she is working on, she does her very best at it. She has a great attitude, and she works hard. She's a gifted student and a pleasure to have in class." Christina listed Ms. Newman, her Spanish teacher, and Ms. Hartley, her counselor, as two staff members who have positively impacted her. She has taken challenging classes while at Granite Falls High School. These include AP Calculus, Spanish 5, Physics, and Chemistry, just to name a few. Christina is involved at Granite Falls High School and National Honor Society, Knowledge Bowl, Link Crew, Food Drive, and Phi Theta Kappa at Everett Community College. Christina mentioned a success story when she tutored a student in Monte Cristo in math when she was a freshman. Outside of school, Christina loves to draw in paint. She also enjoys sewing, baking, and gardening as well. She started working a few weeks ago at IGA in Granite Falls. In addition, Christina volunteered at the Snowell Library. After school, Christina plans on going to college, hopefully University of Washington, to become an engineer. One thing unique about Christina, Christina that some people may not know is that she also played the violin in the middle school orchestra in Portland. Christina Scott. Last student here is Alexa Mace. Alexa's an amazing left grader who is maximizing her time at Granite Falls High School. She has a GPA of 3.95 and ranks fourth in her class. Ms. Newman mentioned, "Alexa is such a positive, sweet girl. She's kind to those around her, and you can see her smiling even with her mask on. She's hardworking and willing to participate." Mr. Dinwiddie said, "Alexa is hardworking, intelligent, quiet, kind, and amazing. She works hard not only on her classwork, she works to understand the entire concept or event from multiple perspectives." Mr. Williams stated, "Alexa is one of those students that goes above and beyond with each assignment. She has added a strong drive to work hard and do well to her natural smarts. In addition, she is kind and hopeful to other students. She participates well in class, and she influences her peers for good. Alexa has a bright future. Alexa has taken very rigorous classes, including pre-calculus, chemistry, AP Psychology, AP Language, and Spanish 3. Many of her courses are dual college credits. Alexa has definitely combined her studies in school with her passions and interests. Alexa loves reading, especially books about psychology. She enjoys painting, singing, playing guitar, and skateboarding. One of her own favorite art paintings was of a Roman statue that was inspired from her enjoyment of taking AP Art History from Mr. Williams. Her passion of reading psychology books comes from taking AP Psychology from Mr. Dinwiddie. Alexa balances all this while working 20 hours per week at Playa Bonita Restaurant as a hostess. She's also planning on playing tennis this year. After high school, Alexa hopes to go to school in Italy and study art and history at a university. She also wants to travel abroad. Alexa.
At Crossroads, we have Mr. Bay. Okay, so Landon, not really. So my first person who gets Success in Ed, I'm gonna just read his little paper, just because it's kind of an honor to give him this award. Landon Scott, Mr. B. Yes, that is what it said. Mrs. Corde's nominee for Success in Education. Landon entered Crossroads after he had some issues at high school's freshman year. And by looking at his records, I'm sure Mr. B. spent quite a bit of time with him in the middle school as well. Um, let's just say school wasn't really his top priority. Landon struggled a little bit at first when he got to Crossroads until he found out that this really was a good fit. He now has a four-point straight A's. He's smart, friendly, hardworking, and fully engaged in all of his academics, and actually makes a really positive contribution to our school. He shows up early every morning and helps in community service. Um, his check-in connect teacher didn't say, I'll just give you the quote. He says, "It will be really nice to see Landon's name carved with something that he didn't do himself." But this young man is most deserving of this honor. He's fabulous sense of humor and incredible work ethic and a great attitude towards being at school. He's smart, and he goes the extra mile to make, to set a good example for his peers. He's polite and considerate. He hasn't always been polite and considerate, so he's, like, we've really seen growth with him. Um, he goes above and beyond to help his fellow students, and he's going to graduate from high school and going to the plumber's apprenticeship, once we become a union plumber. First one will be Ms. Emma Lanigan. I didn't write up the name on here because... So, Ms. Emma ended, came over to Crossroads as halfway through her freshman year. It's really tough to go to a new school and a new town and have your dad be as the boss. It's really kind of a rough place to be. So she came on over to Crossroads and immediately was one of our strongest leaders. She started participating in Voices of Youth, ended up becoming our ASV Vice President, is on second year serving on the board as our board representative. Um, Emma also works 20 hours a week at Playa Bonita and is taking a full load at Crossroads and a full load at Running Start. And that is because her goal right now is to graduate early. Dr. M. will be receiving an email asking permission for early graduation from her any day now. Um, so he could be expecting that. So her strong-willed stubbornness, um, this is what, Mr.? This Mr.? Her strong-willed and stubbornness is going to be what gets her through on those crazy days when she becomes a teacher. She just needs to remember me. So when she decides to focus on something, she obviously has, is able to do it. Um, and Emma is really gonna leave, she'll leave Crossroads a better place than it was when she found it. So I really appreciate everything she does.
We have some staff we want to recognize, just a few awards. And our first presenter, we're gonna call Ms. Skursky back up to present the first award to our classified staff.
Yeah, I know what they're worth. All right, so I am going to give an honor to our Classified Success in Ed Award. And it's not going just to one employee, it's going to two. And if I could get both of them to come down. Suzanne Harris. There's some history here. Okay, so I'm gonna start out with you, and then I'm gonna go to you, and then both of you at the same time. All right, so Dawn Mann started six years ago in our building as a building secretary. She is a shining light and a beacon of sweetness. And she does it in a very fast-paced office in school. She is gentle, sweet, and cares about all the students very deeply. Some examples are her ability to be calm during parent conversations, follow up on student attendance, and she has organized her system for an effective parent pickup. Dawn has a smile for everyone. She has amazing school spirit and dresses up for all of our spirit days. You always find her smiling and speaking kindly. She is embedded in our community and is perceived as a pillar of communication between families and schools. Okay, Suze?
And make a great Elsa.
I have more, I have more to say. Okay, so Suzanne. Suzanne Harris is one of the most critical employees at Mountain Way Elementary. Suzanne is like a conductor, managing and keeping track of so many things at her school. She works closely with the building administration on creating schedules, managing budget, creating and updating class lists, hearing and managing substitutes, to name a few. She also helps her staff with purchasing materials, locating teaching supplies, communicating upcoming events, learning and learning Mountain Way expectations and procedures, and anything else that teachers are needing, she knows. She helps her parents with technology issues, answers phone calls, and greets parents in a friendly way, and she provides positive customer service. She works closely with our transportation department to organize student transportation and to communicate changes when they occur. She also stays late each day in order to make sure all students have arrived safely home. Suzanne is very helpful to all parties at our school. She is able to multitask and never too busy to help a parent, staff, and or a student. Okay, so my next comment, these are from, this is from, I believe, one of our persons who submitted the form for both of you. And so it's kind of meant to go towards both of you, and it's to our dynamic duo. Suzanne and Dawn are the dynamic duo of Mountain Way Elementary. They greet everyone through the doors with a smile and offer their help, particularly to families with questions. Suzanne could be a member of the transportation team with her knowledge of the town and bus routes. They greet students at the door as they enter the building with kind words, and they remember students and their families from year to year. Most importantly, Suzanne and Dawn infuse our building with humor and laughter. Suzanne and Dawn have lived in Granite Falls for years and have a long history in the school district. They are aware of partnerships in the community from the past years and are able to offer suggestions when we are searching to work with local organizations. They know many people they can refer staff to when needing to reach out. They have worked with the local police or sheriff department with plenty of events on the school grounds, local sports groups, and guest speakers for assemblies. Suzanne and Dawn are proactive in their thinking about needs that might arise for families or staff if schedules and special events take place, and they even participate after school. They are both active in materials pickup and help coordinate the smooth running of parades and kindergarten roundup. Suzanne and Dawn have become a title. It's almost like J-Lo or Bedderfer, but it's Suzanne and Dawn, and they're our awesome dynamic duo. But it's Suzanne Dawn, and they're our awesome dynamic duo.
Thanks.
The certified award. Also gonna bring out Mr. Maker of South Rock, so he's a new assistant principal at Granite Falls High School. So our nomination was Miss Stephanie Rees-Steph Schwartz, so if you can come forward. I nominated Stephanie for many reasons. First and foremost, she was the first teacher Mr. May and I sat down with at the Met when we arrived at Granite Falls High School. She was so passionate and invested in the school, staff, and students. But even before all this, and when I was still in Florida, I participated in a Zoom interview for an open ELA position. Stephanie stood out on the interview as one of the interviewers and the ELA Department Head. I knew then that I had a teacher that was caring, kind, knowledgeable, and a leader. My first sit-down, get down to business discussion with Stephanie was about the mastery class. She was a very organized, attention-to-detail person who wanted to create a fair, consistent, manageable, and meaningful system in class for students to recover certain core classes during last year's mostly remote learning. I've had the opportunity to be in Stephanie's mastery class for ELA and can see the organization well facilitated delivery of instruction. She has built an amazing rapport with her students that has created a very positive learning environment. She has been very evident, this has been also very evident in her regular ELA classes. Stephanie teaches freshman English and AP Language. The level of student engagement, positive culture and climate, and routine are exactly what you want to see in every class at Granite Falls High School. This definitely extends from how well she leads her PLCs. Her attention to detail and high expectations has made her PLC live in the stage of performing. I've really appreciated Stephanie's willingness to share with me the temperature of the staff. Having this insight helps me navigate the marathon of a school year and the important task of taking care of all of our staff. Finally, Stephanie is the advisor for GSA. Her desire to make sure every student feels accepted at school is evident in her relationship with every student in the club. I see her with the club members after school in the comments and can attest to her caring. Stephanie is very deserving of this recognition of being the recipient of the Success in Education Award. She has been at Granite Falls High School for 20-plus years and has positively impacted thousands of students. We have one final awards night to a staff member, and it's the Superintendents Award that I give out each quarter. And it's called the mucker award. And so if you are a hockey fan, or in my case, I grew up playing hockey and still love hockey, a mucker is that player who will do anything in a game to help their team. They'll check, they'll be checked, they sacrifice their body, they get the puck to where it needs to go. And so they're just there all around, do whatever it takes for the team. Typically, I give out two or three at this event, but tonight I just have one to give out. So I'm gonna have Brittany Lundberg come down. The last 20 months have changed our lives. None of us have experienced the pandemic before. There was no training on what to do or how to do it. While many of us have been involved in the day-to-day decisions to attempt to mirror a pre-COVID type of school and keep safety, and safety is always our top priority. It's been Brittany Lundberg who's been leading our COVID protocols and just leading our, as our district nurse. Brittany is a true mucker. She has done whatever it has taken to keep our students and staff safe, informed, to keep our families informed, and our students in school. She's also had to make tough decisions and oftentimes have some very tough conversations, all in an environment of change. Change that doesn't come from this body, but comes from the state or local or district, health district. Please, I can't thank Brittany enough for her leadership during a very, very tough time. Again, keeping all of us safe and informed. And so again, Brittany, thank you for your leadership as our district nurse during a very, very tough time and for all that you've done for our school district. So Brittany Lundberg. At this time, we're gonna take a 15-minute break. During that break, we would love to take pictures with recipients and the plaque right over here. There's also free provided for those who are interested. After that 15-minute break, we will rejoin the meeting, or restart, restart the meeting right here. So thank you all. Thank you for coming tonight. Congratulations. All right, so we're gonna go get started again. So we'll call the meeting back to order. All right, on to item 2E, Board Comment. We'll start with Dr. Penega.
Thank you. I'm going to, there's no microphone, so maybe I'll stay here, although I'd like to. But anyway, um, my, my report is really a thank you. I figure this is the last shot. I really want to thank some people, and I won't get into a lot of detail. But I've asked a few people to stay into this section because it means a lot. Um, I have done more in my career than go to Woodstock, but I won't elaborate on all of it. Um, the, actually, I'm really old and I've done this education thing for a long time. I've actually 19 years teaching. This isn't all consecutive in order. I've gone back and forth with both 19 years teaching and 22 years in administration. And this was Illinois, Arizona, and here in Washington, and different districts all the way through. But, uh, the, the main thing, the joy of this whole thing is the people. And that's why it's been tough on me with the Zoom and the not, you know, not being able to look at people and talk. So I wanna thank two people on what's happened currently. Because, and these people could tell you, I went kicking, screaming into the Zoom land. I, it really was tough on me, over and over, and getting, uh, it was just tough. I was grouchy and live up in the hills a little bit and couldn't get connection. And these people were so great. Uh, they've been great for any kind of help I need. And they both happen to be here right now. Dan Scholar and Melanie Freeman have bailed me out over and over. Uh, and they're just great people and they work so hard. We're so lucky to have them here, Dan especially. And this was before Zoom. I was bugging Dan about computers, but we both like sports, so we talked a little bit about sports before I left. But thank you, you both, you've just been fantastic. Um, the people that I've asked a few people to stay, I talked to Karen Mann before about with the teaching and learning. But the people that, there's so many, I'm not gonna be able to elaborate on all of it. But we came here in 96, long back, and not very many people were here when we got here, but Bridget was one of them. She's been here, she's younger than me, but boy, she got a young star. And she's, well, she's a friend, she's a friend of the family and been through a lot of things. But, uh, the, and Dave, I asked him to stay, he had a commute back, and we've talked about each other at meetings through, through the years, but it means a lot. It means a lot to see the success of his career and how it's gone. We worked together for, I don't know, 12 years, maybe not. Uh, no, it's an overlap, maybe, uh, six or seven years, I don't know. But we were both at the middle school, and then he's had it since I retired. But, and we're friends, but he's really done an amazing job. And when I left the middle school, I was really a lucky favorite guy. I had all kinds of help, and they've gone on to have careers in administration. But Dave's had to do a lot of it on his own. He's got great help now, but it's just not the same. But beyond that, no matter what happens, we're friends, and I think we've helped each other. Uh, so that's, you know, just an example of what, what it's meant to me to have these people. And the new people, I have some I don't know for nearly as long. But I still believe in face-to-face and people and caring about people. And I'm not saying this has, what happens now has diminished that. It's gonna come back, but it's been so tough. And people think board members don't make a difference, and that's not as individual board members. But the six years I've been here, and some, most of you, Robert, Carl, they've been here longer than that. But you don't think board members make a difference. Look back on these last few years and what, what is different here. It's not just the new superintendent, but a lot of things. And but the, my admiration goes to people that stick through the toughest times. And these, these really are the toughest times. And I taught history when I was teaching. This time from 2019 through 2021 is gonna go down as a real, real deal as far as cutting into the human element of it. And a lot of people have gone way above and beyond. And I think, uh, it, uh, it shows by the people that we have here and the good things that are happening. And me, I'm a big worry ward. And I just, I shouldn't be worrying that much because good people have come here. And Josh's, Dr. M. has done some amazing hiring along with staff, board support. So I just wanna thank everybody for doing all these positive things, and especially the board members. Carl's not here, but Carl's there. Hi, Carl.
Hello, hello.
I can't even, is that it? Oh, hi, Carl. Hi, Carl. Or we can cheer a lot, too. Uh, okay, I won't ramble anymore. I just feel very privileged to have been a part of the school board. And the best years of my life have been the last ones as an administrator and also as a board member. And the friends that I've made, I, so I have a lot to be thankful for. And my health is still pretty much there, but my short-term memory is not as good. But the main thing I have to be thankful for, and I'm so glad she came here tonight. I didn't make her, you know, but she said, no, I think I should go, I'll go. And she's a legend in special ed, but you'll be a legend, but I'm just saying. And she's president of the Community Coalition. I'm so lucky. She's the love of my life, my best friend, and what better way to end than that? So thank you all.
Let's call that. Carl will, Carl, you wanna say something?
No. How can I follow that? I love you, Dr. P. You're the absolute best. You represent the best of us, my friend.
Thank you, Carl, again. All right, I'm saying to you, so in my defense, I wrote them everyone's names in order beforehand. So Dave, you were next, am I? You are. Any comments, Director Green?
Well, I don't say much, and I wasn't planning on saying much tonight, but I just thank you all for the opportunity. I had no idea that Robert would rope me into this, so I blame it on him. I appreciate it, and all you guys have done for the school. Thank you.
Take them a gavel. Oh, I did. Director V.
So what's an interesting thing that you bring up that Robert Butler roped you into this thing? Because years ago, I sat at Dave's kitchen table and we got talking. And he said, you know, you should join the school board, you should run for school board. And years passed and time passed, and I decided to take him up on that, and I'm not sorry I did. It's been a pleasure to serve with both of you. Our board, I think, has been, I mean, we're definitely individuals, but together, we work well. Even with our individual things that we champion, we work together well as a board, you know, including Carl. Carl, you're there somewhere. And I appreciated working with you, I've appreciated learning from you. With Dave, I've served on the CTE Committee even longer than being on the board. That's something that both he and I have been passionate about for as far as I can remember, as far as I first knew what CTE was. So I've appreciated serving with you, and I hope that you'll still support us and serve with us in different capacities as your time allows, even though you won't be sitting in that chair every first and third Wednesday. So, Dr. P., we love and appreciate you for an entire career of service to our community. And like you mentioned, your wife Karen will service to our community. And I know because it's the people you are, you will continue to serve, and you'll continue to be here, even if you're not in that chair every first and third Wednesday, I know that you'll continue to be here. So thank you to both of you. Other than just gratitude for, for the board members that we have, but also like to acknowledge and welcome, you know, that there will be new board members, and I look forward to working with them as well as cohesively and as we have in the past, right? To continue to do the best that we can do for the students and staff at Granite Falls.
Carl, did you wanna make an official board comment or just what you said before?
Yeah, I has the, I literally just wanted to be here because I wanted to support Dr. P. and Dave on, and just cheer them for an unbelievable service to the, to the board and the district. Has the board already voted to not have me here? Because I literally just wanted to be a participant, if so.
Yeah, we did. I just thought for Dave and for Dr. Penega to give you a chance.
Okay, got it. I'll just quickly say, Dave, I. I'll just quickly say, Dave, I, I can't tell you, I, I think you have the impression that because you don't say much that, that you aren't as impactful, but the times that you have spoken up and the things I know that you're passionate about and all the conversations behind, you've been, I, I think, an absolute wonderful addition to the board. I've absolutely loved having you on it the last four years. I've always appreciated your input. I still think that you should write a book for probably one of the best dads in the world. I mean, jeez Louise, look at the, the quality of kids you've been able to produce, my friend, you and your wonderful wife. And I just, I'm gonna miss you, but I'm just so honored that I've been able to spend this last four years with you. Or has been more, no, four years.
Thank you. All right, let's go to our student representative, Maya from the high school.
At the high school, we just got done with conferences and state testing, so it was a stressful week, but everybody did really well going through that. And this Friday, we actually have our last home football game, so it should be interesting.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Maya regarding the high school? All right, Emma from Crossroads.
Crossroads. Last week, we had an absolutely spectacular home house. It was so cool. I enjoyed it. It was just from the students and staff, but they did a great job for the year-end class. Absolutely amazing. Our quarter ended this week. We had conferences, and I'd also just like to say, you know, just wonderful jobs with the board, you guys. I remember two years ago, when Josh and I came to, for him to get sworn in on the board, and I was supposed to like take a picture or something, and I just randomly wasn't there. But it's so weird how time, like how much time has passed, which is like yesterday. Thank you so much.
So for my board comments, I wanted to acknowledge and congratulate, okay, I wrote everyone's name down. Isla, Lily, George, Ava, Nicholas, Alexia, Allison, Ursula, Steve, Sam, Alexa, Christina, Alexa, Landon, Emma. Is it, is it Sue Dawn? Is that what we're calling it? Or Dawn Sue? Because they're, they're like one, one name. Sue and Dawn. Stephanie and Brittany. I love Success in Education night, and I think it was a wonderful chance to just honor those who are making a better place in the world. So I want to thank them. I also wanted to acknowledge the elections. I, I love our democracy, and I love when people get out and vote. And it just makes me happy to know that we are having two board members retire from the board, but the, the, the community is in the process of choosing two people to take their place, to step up and serve the community. I look forward to working to, with the new board members. As soon as the election is certified, we'll get ready to greet them and invite them in and start working. So I look forward to that. And I do also want to echo the statement, so I think everyone in the room, I'm thankful to work, had to definitely work with Dr. Penegas. I remember when we interviewed him to actually join the board, it was one of those times where it was an easy choice. He's been a strong member of the community, who brought so much to the table that it was easy for us. And he, he lived up to what we hoped to get when we chose to be on the board. And I want to thank you for that, Dr. Penegas. And Director Green, my fault, I'm sorry, but I do it again. What you brought to the board is, is what I mentioned earlier, is that, that passion. It makes you a great director, so I'm excited to say that I served with you for four years. Those are my board comments. So moving on. Item three, district reports, we have none this evening. So we're gonna move on to item four, items from the floor. Understand, Melanie, that no one signed up for items from the floor. Unfinished business, we have none, and new business, we have none. We have a consent agenda, and there were additions to that consent agenda. So is there any discussion about the consent agenda and the additions? If not, I'm willing to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the additions.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the additions.
Motion's been made. Would someone like to make their final second?
I would like to make my final second.
We have a second for Dr. Penegas. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Any opposed? Gentlemen, thank you so much. I will call, I will adjourn this meeting now at 7:29. Thank you.